Members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Academic Affairs, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Jill O'Donnell Torme.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Charles Shorter.
Present.
Trustee Henry Berger.
Present.
Trustee Bryant Oberfeld.
Yeah, Bryant here, he's here.
Trustee Martin Burke.
Present.
Professor Luby Alatriz, faculty alternate. Alle Hader Hassan, student rep.
Present.
Dugozzi Akadnoa, student alternate. We have a quorum. This public meeting of the CUNY on Academic Policy Program Research is now called to order. On March 7, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202, declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1, which included the suspension of law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonically or other similar service. Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law, to the extent necessary, permits any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in public person access to meetings, and authorizes such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar device, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceedings and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. In accordance with the executive order, this board meeting is being held via video conference with a live stream found on the CUNY Board of Trustees website. A copy of the calendar agenda is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute your audio so we can ensure that everyone can hear. And I will take the roll call of attendance for members of the Chancellery and other guests. We have a lot of guests today, so in the interest of time, I'm going to, I'll call out the Chancellery and then everyone else, if you don't mind, I'm just going to say your name and the college you're from because we have a very packed house tonight. Chancellor Felix Matos Rodriguez. General Counsel and Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Jose Luis Cruz.
Present.
President Vincent Boudreaux, COPS liaison. Okay, now, here we go. Mayang Su Lee, Baruch College.
Present.
Anne Lopes, Brooklyn College.
Present.
Tony List, City College. William Fritz, College of Staten Island.
Present.
Jay Michael Parrish, College of Staten Island.
Present.
Amin El Mahandes, CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Policy.
Present.
Daisy Coco De Filippis, Hostess Community College.
Present.
Charles Drago, Hostess Community College.
Present.
Eugene Son, Hostess Community College. Joanne Russell, Kingsborough Community College. Daniel Lemmons, Lehman College.
Present.
Colleen Letoff, Lehman College. Mary Pearl, Macaulay College, Macaulay Honors College, sorry.
Present. That's okay.
Joseph Ugoritz, Macaulay Honors College.
Present.
Patricia Ramey, Medgar Evers.
Patricia Ramsey, present.
Patricia Ramsey, no, okay, sorry. Adaro Green, Medgar Evers.
Present.
Jonathan Gallardi, Central Office. Gallardi, sorry, Jonathan.
Present.
Mark Cioli, Central Office.
Present.
Sarah Trulch, Central Office.
Present.
Thank you, Anne. Okay, let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely, I will announce the resolution and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you are voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. We will take up the following items for approval. Action Item 1A, the approval of the minutes of the March 2, 2021 meeting. I move the approval of Action Item 1A. Do I have a second?
Burke, second.
Thanks, Martin. Any discussion? We will now vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, that item passes. Action Item 1B is the policy calendar. We are now going to take up Items 1B-1 through 1B.15 for approval. Policy Items 1B.1 through 1B.15 are resolutions regarding the awarding of honorary degrees at various commencements, including the following. Baruch College, award an honorary degree at commencement to Dr. Raj Chetty. Brooklyn College, award an honorary degree at commencement to Fatima Goss Graves. City College, award an honorary degree at commencement to Edward Blank. City College, award an honorary degree at commencement to Dr. Alondra Nelson. College of Staten Island, award an honorary degree at commencement to Virginia Allen. College of Staten Island, award an honorary degree at commencement to Lucille and Jay Chazanov. Hostess Community College, award an honorary degree at commencement to Congressman Jose E. Serrano. Lehman College, award an honorary degree at commencement to Congressman Elliot L. Engel. Lehman College, award an honorary degree at commencement to TJ English. Lehman College, award an honorary degree at commencement to Dolores Hurata. Macaulay Honors College, award an honorary degree at commencement to Baratunde Thurston. Medgar Evers, award an honorary degree at commencement to Ziggy Marley. Medgar Evans, award an honorary degree at commencement to Michael T. Pugh. CUNY Grad School of Public Health and Health Policy, award an honorary degree at commencement to Heather McKee. The City University of New York, award a university honorary degree to Christopher Julius Rock III at Kingsbury Community College's commencement. I now call Executive Vice Chairman, Chancellor, and University Provost Cruz to provide any further background on these items if you need to or want to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. CUNY confers honorary degrees to distinguished individuals who have made invaluable contributions to society through their scientific, political, or artistic achievements. These esteemed individuals have also dedicated themselves to a life of radical and demanding work for the betterment of society, which is a type of work that is in perfect harmony with the CUNY mission. For the Spring 2021 commencement, most of CUNY's honorary degrees will be conferred via virtual ceremonies that will be livestreamed. However, Chancellor Felix Matos Rodriguez has recently provided guidelines regarding responsible planning for in-person commencements for colleges interested in pursuing them. A preview of this year's honorary degree recipients include an iconic civil rights leader, two Emmy-winning artists, two former US congressmen, two bestselling authors, and multiple business leaders who have devoted their resources to furthering a more just and inclusive society. I will provide brief, high-level summaries of the honorary degree nominees for individual colleges, and then invite the corresponding representatives from each college to add additional information if so needed. For Baruch College, Dr. Raj Chetty is the William A. Ackman Professor of Public Economics at Harvard University and Director of Opportunity Insights. Dr. Chetty's research combines empirical evidence and economic theory to help design more effective government policies. His work on tax policy, unemployment insurance, and education has been widely cited in media outlets and congressional testimony. His current research focuses on how children from disadvantaged backgrounds can better their chances of succeeding. At this time, I invite interim Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs, Myung Su Lee, to say a word or two more about this honorary degree nominee.
Okay, thanks so much. Actually, this Dr. Raj Chetty's nomination for honorary degree was actually passed last year on its meeting of May 8, 2020. But, you know, because of that pandemic situation, we had to defer by one year. So I just want to remind you that this body already evaluated. And Dr. Chetty is either Harvard University professor who does research specifically on the social mobility issue, which is very much representative of the Baruch College over the years. So we are happy to invite him as honorary doctorate degree holder. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooklyn College. Fatima Goss Graves, the president and CEO of the National Women's Law Center, has been an outspoken advocate for the rights of oppressed women since joining the staff of the NWLCL in 2005. Ms. Goss Graves is among the co-founders of the Time's Up Legal Defense Fund, created in early 2018 to support lower-income women seeking justice for sexual harassment and assault in the workplace. Ms. Goss Graves is recognized for her effectiveness in the complex public policy arena at both the state and federal levels, and regularly testifies before Congress and federal agencies. At this time, I invite Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs Anne Lopes to say a word or two more about this honorary degree nominee.
Thank you, Executive Vice Chancellor Cruz. And Fatima Goss Graves has worked really tirelessly on the front lines of the legal battles for women's equality, whether it be for equal pay, health care, fighting sexual discrimination, securing reproductive rights, Title IX enforcement, championing the rights of trans people, and especially in protecting and enhancing the rights of low-income individuals, which has resulted in long-lasting and significant changes for the law. And it is for these reasons that we wish to bestow this honorary doctorate upon her. Thank you.
Thank you, Provost Lopes. We now move on to City College. Edward Blank's company, Edward Blank Associates, Inc., EBA, used the telephone as a powerful direct marketing tool. EBA helped to define the telemarketing industry we know today through innovations in training, quality control, technology, and data security. Mr. Blank serves as an active member of various philanthropic and political organizations, including the National Board of the Jewish National Fund and its UN representative. Mr. Blank, in honor of his late wife, Dr. Sharon Cosloy, a microbial geneticist and chair of the Biology Department of the City College of New York, endowed three funds at City College. At City College as well, we have Dr. Alondra Nelson, who directed the Institute for Research on Women, Gender, and Sexuality, and was the founding co-director of the Columbia University Women's Gender and Sexuality Council at Columbia University. Dr. Nelson serves as the Harold F. Linder Professor at the Institute for Advanced Study, an independent research center in Princeton, New Jersey, and president of the Social Science Research Council, an organization dedicated to advancement of social research for the public good. At this time, I invite any of our colleagues from City College who may be in attendance to say a word or two more about these honorary degree recipients or nominees.
Thank you, Jose Luis. We, Dr. Linder's career has really been an exemplar to our students working in STEM. She has, through the course of her career, blended, you know, leadership in STEM fields with a concern to diversify the field and to bring a social science lens to issues of grave social import. We heartily endorse this honorary degree candidate and will be proud to have her earn a City College honorary degree.
Thank you, President Boudreaux. For the College of Staten Island, Virginia Allen worked as a private-duty nurse before becoming a surgical nurse, and then worked as a personnel training director at Brooklyn Jewish Hospital before starting a career in labor relations with local 1199 AFL-CIO. Ms. Allen has pursued volunteer work and community involvement almost for over 70 years, including decades of volunteering in the Women's Crisis Center in Port Richmond and Bread and Roses. Also from the College of Staten Island, Lucille and Jay Chazanov, who have decades of service to the College of Staten Island, the Staten Island community, and the City of New York. Both Mr. and Mrs. Chazanov have been inducted into the College of Staten Island Alumni Association Hall of Fame in recognition of their service and support. The Chazanovs are also active philanthropists on Staten Island, where their support has touched the entire borough. At this time, I invite President William Fritz and Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs, Jay Michael Parrish, to say a word or two more about these honorary degree nominees.
Yes, thank you, Jose Luis Cruz. I will say something about Virginia Allen and then allow the Provost to present the Chazanovs. Virginia Allen is an amazing individual, civic leader on Staten Island. She is part of a group of women on Staten Island known as the Black Angels. Back when Seaview Hospital was the tuberculosis sanitarium for New York City, many of the white nurses quit because of the terrible working conditions, and so black nurses were recruited from across the country to serve. And they became known as the Black Angels for their humanitarian work and outreach. After her service within the Black Angels, she earned an associate's degree from the College of Staten Island. She also served at Willbrook State School, that you've heard me talk about many times with our deep ties to the College of Staten Island. She continues to remain very active in terms of social issues on Staten Island. We're just so excited about this opportunity to be able to help tell the story of the incredible group of women that served in this capacity. I'll call on Provost Parrish to say a few words about the Chazanovs.
Thank you, President Fritz. You know, I think we've got a remarkable group of nominees this year, all of whom were also students at the College of Staten Island or its predecessors. In the case of Lucille and Jay Chazanov, they have a long history of service to the community and philanthropy. And their story begins, actually, at Staten Island Community College. They were taking a business class together, and they were introduced to one another by one of their faculty members. And that led to a very long and very strong relationship between them. They were a true power couple, each of whom had numerous strong leadership positions in different organizations and also a strong record of community service. Unfortunately, we're making the award to Lucille Chazanov posthumously because she passed away during, earlier this year. But they are very strong supporters of the College of Staten Island. They actually endowed the Lucille and Jay Chazanov School of Business about a year and a half ago with the largest philanthropic gift ever on Staten Island. So we're very excited to put them forward.
Thank you, President Fritz and Provost Parrish. We now move on to the nominee from Hostess Community College. Congressman Jose E. Serrano dedicated his career in local, state, and federal politics supporting the equal opportunity, education, and economic prosperity of underrepresented communities. Congressman Serrano worked tirelessly to allocate funding to Hostess Community College throughout his time in public office and arranged for Hostess Community College to have a piece of history in the form of a Puerto Rican flag that went to space on a NASA flight. Congressman Serrano has served as a role model and example of what is achievable for students in the Bronx, reflective of its diverse communities, particularly those of Puerto Rican and Hispanic descent. At this time, I invite interim President Daisy Boco de Filippis and/or some of members from her team to say a word or two more about this honorary degree nominee.
I think you summarized it well, but I need to say that as a CUNY faculty, I observe with tremendous respect how he stood for Hostess at the Assembly in Albany and fought for funding at that point. Then, during my tenure as a provost at Hostess, 2002 to 2008, I was able to get his support as we brought our first Title V award, and we also worked with Columbia University and the Global Studies Scholars Program. We are so very grateful, we are so honored. There is not very much we can do, but this modest honorary associate degree of humane letters, it is something that we do with a lot of respect and love. I know that the college is building in the library an area dedicated to him as well. And if the provost would like to comment a little bit on anything else, that would be fine.
Madam President, I think you said it all. We're very proud of the contributions that Mr. Serrano has made to the college. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
We now move to the nominees from Lehman College. TJ English has operated as the epitome of an engaged citizen as a New York Times bestselling author, renowned journalist, activist, and humanitarian through his books and writing for television. Mr. English has collaborated across physical and other borders between the US and Mexico in an effort to safeguard protections for journalists in Mexico who are targeted for trying to expose the truth. Mr. English has worked tirelessly to give voice to those who may not have one, to expose bias and corruption, and effect change where necessary. Representative Elliot Engdom served 16 terms as a US representative from 1989 to 2021, representing districts in the North Bronx and Southern Westchester County. He has been a tireless and steadfast supporter of his alma mater and the Lehman College campus community in general. Over the course of his career as a public servant, he has remained a steadfast supporter of education as a former teacher and school counselor who was also a member of the New York State Assembly. Dolores Huerta has devoted her life to improving working conditions for farmworkers and laborers, particularly those of Hispanic or Latinx descent and from historically underserved communities. Ms. Huerta co-founded with Cesar Chavez the National Farm Workers Association, which later became the United Farm Workers, which laid the groundwork for her successful lobbying to secure the working rights of California laborers throughout the Agricultural Labor Relation Act. At this time, I invite interim President Dan Lemmons and AVP of Marketing and Communications, Colleen Letoff, to say a word or two more about these honorary degree nominees.
Thank you, Executive Vice Chancellor Cruz. Elliot Engel is a key elected official, and he's probably one of our most prominent alumni who's been an elected official. And as you noted, he's served long in the House of Representatives. As an alumnus, he's always been available to us as a college. During my time as interim president, he met with me whenever I asked for a meeting, and he's been a great supporter. And as you know, he ended his last session in Congress as the Chair of the Foreign Affairs Committee, and at a time when that was a very important role for him to be playing. TJ English, as you noted, is an engaged citizen, author, journalist, someone who, through his presence in writing and writing for television, both television and for books, has been a very prominent person, particularly engaging in border issues and around safety and protection for journalists in Mexico. The values that he's fought for and that he has demonstrated amply in his life are ones that I think really resonate with at Lehman College. And he is a great model for our students. Same can be said for Dolores Huerta. Her role in working with Cesar Chavez in forming the United Farm Workers Union and other work that she's done on behalf of farmworkers. As a Latina, I think she is a great model for many Lehman students. And as you know, though maybe this isn't the substantial part of the work that she's done throughout her life, she is now famous for "Sí se puede", which is something that we all know and has been kind of a rallying cry that President Obama used, translating it into English. So again, someone who we think is a great person for Lehman College to honor.
Thank you, President Lemmons. Macaulay Honors College. Mr. Baratunde Thurston has worked throughout his career to advance the ideals of civic participation, open communication about difficult subjects, and data-based factual inquiry into important issues. Mr. Thurston, through his service on the boards of Bill and the Brooklyn Public Library, demonstrated a commitment to public education and access to excellent teaching and learning. Mr. Thurston has, through his podcast, "How to Citizen" with Baratunde, and his TED Talk, "How to Deconstruct Racism", one headline at a time, advanced public understanding of civics and improved understanding among and between people. At this time, I invite Dean Mary Pearl and Senior Associate Dean and Chief Academic Officer Joseph Ugoritz to say a word or two more about this honorary degree nominee.
Thank you. Baratunde Thurston is not only a very serious activist who addresses serious issues, he's also hilarious. He's a comedian who is supervising producer of "The Daily Show" with Trevor Noah and was editor of digital for "The Onion". His New York Times bestseller is called "How to Be Black", which is a satirical self-help memoir. He's written three other books of humorous social criticism. Many of you might have seen him on CNN. He's a regular guest on the show called "The 11th Hour" with Brian Williams. And he has a wonderful capacity to bring compassion, civics, humor, and great, good judgment and compassionate love to every discussion about the serious issues of structural racism in our society.
Thank you. Dean Pearl and UC Cruz have just had one quick, specific example to illustrate some of what you've heard. At a recent meeting with our graduating students, Mr. Thurston made a really impassioned plea to them to be impatient with the world and patient with yourselves, to strive to make change quickly and immediately, but to give yourself the grace and the patience to make mistakes and to learn to improve. And it was just a super-inspiring message to them and just so emblematic of his own career and what he brings to our students.
Thank you. We now move to the nominees from Medgar Evers College. Ziggy Marley is an eight-time Grammy winner, Emmy winner, musician, producer, activist, and humanitarian. Ziggy Marley has cultivated a legendary career for close to 40 years. Mr. Marley uses his success to champion political and philanthropic causes. Ziggy initially served as Goodwill Youth Ambassador for the United Nations and participated in the Bob Marley Foundation initiatives worldwide, reinforcing his reputation as a community leader, one who has peacefully participated in Black Lives Matters protests. Mr. Marley received the Black Press of America's prestigious Global Icon Achievement Award, reflective of Medgar Evers College's mission to be at the forefront of CUNY's discourse regarding racial inequity. Michael T. Pugh is a president and CEO and businessman who has utilized his position at Carver Bankor to provide financial access within the banking industry for over 25 years. Under the leadership of Michael T. Pugh, Carver Bankor has sponsored and supported the School of Businesses' inaugural financial conference and celebration of the Medgar Evers College 50th anniversary. Medgar Evers College's commitment to social justice, emphasis on service, and dedication to preparing students to identify, analyze, and solve local and global educational and social political issues make Michael T. Pugh an ideal candidate for an honorary CUNY degree from Medgar Evers College. At this time, I invite President Patricia Ramsey and members of her team to say a word or two more about these honorary degree nominees.
Thank you. And I would just like to say that I support the nominees that have been recommended by the college. Since I've only been on the job two business days, I will yield to the provost.
Yeah, thank you, President Ramsey. As UC Cruz has, you know, said eloquently, these nominees, you know, speak to the very mission of Medgar Evers College. Marley, Ziggy Marley is well-known and inspiring, you know, somebody who kind of speaks to who we are and who our students are. And Dr. Michael Pooh, being a leader, you know, in financial business, Carver Bank is rooted in the community, and he has given support to our students, you know, provided internships and support, and is really working now to increase our foundation funding. But I will yield to the Chair of Honorary Degree Committee faculty, Professor Adaro Green, to speak more on this. Professor Green?
Thank you, Provost. So you've pretty much said everything, but in addition, I've worked with Ziggy Marley as an advisor in education and philanthropy. And I think that not only will he be a great asset to our recently new BFA program at Medgar Evers College, but he will also help at Medgar Everest College, but he will also help with both worldwide enrollment and recruiting students and others within his reach. And so I'm really in support of us bestowing that honor. As well as Dr. Pugh, he has been very active in supporting the School of Business on the various initiatives and really providing internships and opportunities for our students. So we are also grateful to all of his work and we also support that nomination as well. Thank you.
Thank you. CUNY graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy. Heather McGee is a writer, economist, political analyst, and public advocate who has demonstrated the highest level of leadership and commitment to public health, human dignity, and social justice in her career. Under her leadership at Demos, she achieved landmark consumer protections to rein in credit card abuses, fought for changes in public policy that resulted in the registration of millions of low-income voters, and also is a champion or has been a champion for social justice and is an inspirational example to students of how investing in public health and partnering with one another can empower all of us to overcome injustice. I now invite Dean Ayman El Mohandes to add a word or two more to this honorary degree nominee.
Thank you, Jose Luis, and I'm honored to be with you on the screen, presenting a candidate perhaps in this context for the last time, so I will take that opportunity to express my great gratitude for you and for the leadership you have shown to our university. In that context, I would like also to mention Ms. McGee, who is a beacon, a graduate of Berkeley Law School who dedicated her life to public service. And her most recent book, The Sum of Us: What Racism Costs Everyone and How We Can Prosper Together, is a societal call for those even whose conscience and whose motivation and spirit do not incline them to believe that racism and racial injustices are a significant deficiency in the moral fabric of our nation, to even think in economic terms as to what racism costs everyone in this country. A brilliant publication that I would suggest to all of you to read. The New York Times describes it as illuminating and a hopeful new book. We are honored to offer our honorary degree Doctor of Science to Ms. McGee in recognition for her brilliance, her dedication, and for her unique contributions to this niche of elevating all of us to recognize the importance of racial justice.
Thank you. We now move to our last honorary degree nominee from City University of New York, to be provided by Kingsborough Community College, Chris Rock. Chris Rock has brought laughter to diverse audiences worldwide, but it's his ability to act, write, direct, and produce films to the delight of people of various cultures, economic backgrounds, and philosophies that has made him one of the most distinguished stand-up comedians and comic minds of his generation. To his work on stage and screen, Mr. Rock has translated his comedy into print form in the book Rock This, that examines race relationships and politics. Mr. Rock's commitment to define arts and dedication to communicating multifaceted ideas about important topics to a wide audience match Kingsborough Community College's and CUNY's highest ideals. At this time, I invite interim Vice President of College Advancement and Executive Chief of Staff, Tchika Sotunyon, to say a word or two more about this honorary degree nominee.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor. Mr. Christopher Julius Rock III attended Kingsborough Community College for a year studying in communications. However, he was unable to complete his studies because his career was taken off. He remains, however, a vital friend and advocate to Kingsborough Community College and last year participated in our virtual commencement broadcast in which he briefly stressed the importance of education, letting our graduates know some of the lessons he learned at Kingsborough and how it influenced the work that he continues to do today. In addition to his work in film and entertainment, Mr. Rock is quietly known for all his philanthropic efforts and his support for public education. We thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, and I turn it over to Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you all for all that information. I think we have a wonderful crop of honorary degree recipients this year. So I move the approval of policy items one B one through one B fifteen. Do I have a second?
I'll second, but I'd also like to have a special welcome to our newest president, Patricia Ramsey at Medgar Everest. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have any discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote. And again, please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none, that item has been approved. We are now going to take up item one B sixteen for approval. Policy item one B sixteen is a resolution regarding the extension of the special COVID-19 temporary suspension of standardized testing requirements for undergraduate admission. I now call on Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Cruz to provide further background on this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the CAPRA Committee may recall that the temporary suspension of standardized testing for undergraduate admissions at senior colleges for the spring 2021, fall 2021, and spring 2022 admission cycles was developed in response to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, which made it very difficult or impossible for many CUNY applicants to take said tests. Today, faithful to our commitment to prioritize the health and safety of our prospective students and confident in the admissions processes that we have developed in response to the pandemic, the university presents a resolution to extend the policy to include the fall 2022 and spring 2023 admission cycles. In doing so, we are in step with most of our peers in higher education who have already announced similar actions. As of April twenty-eighth, these fourteen hundred colleges have decided not to require SAT or ACT scores for admissions for fall 2022, which accounts for more than sixty percent of all bachelor's degree institutions in the country and includes all of the Ivy League colleges. All of our local competitors, including St. John's, NYU, Fordham, Pace, Mercy College, and Monroe, San Francisco and Columbia are among this group. Many SUNY colleges and other regional publics that regularly yield students from the New York City metro area have also announced extensions, including SUNY Purchase, Empire State, Albany, Buffalo, Postam, and Geneseo, Tech and Farmingdale as well, and all campuses in the Penn State and Rogers systems. Furthermore, the proposed action would allow CUNY to favorably address a request from our partners in the New York City Department of Education and other non-public and charter consortia to extend CUNY's temporary suspension of standardized test requirements in light of the continuing disruptions to regular high school attendance and college preparation activities and the fact that many students and families are apprehensive about returning to crowded schools and test sites. Now, I'll be the first to acknowledge that the tremendous challenges caused by the pandemic give us no perfect options for admissions and new student enrollments in the coming year. But we have reason to be confident that our colleges can continue their current enhanced admissions practices for another year. Starting last summer, CUNY's Office of Academic Affairs supported college efforts to implement the test score suspension by improving the data systems that undergird admissions to better support holistic review, sharing research and insights of predictors of college success and managing a comprehensive communications plan to engage prospective students and their families along with our high school partners. Our college admissions office has stepped up to meet the challenge of this new environment and eventually embrace the opportunity to engage in a more holistic admissions process. The admissions directors have expressed comfort in the process and satisfaction with the prospective classes they have admitted for fall 2021 and readiness to continue the current admissions policies for another year. Moreover, we recognize that success in colleges is not only or even mostly about the admissions process, but rather about the education that our colleges provide students. Whether or not we choose to extend the current admissions policy, we are planning for enhanced student support starting for the incoming fall 2021 cohort that could be extended to serve the fall 2022 cohort. Given all of this, our hope is that extending the current temporary policy for an additional year will help ensure that CUNY is best positioned to provide a high-quality educational value to the students and communities we serve. And I'll turn it back over to Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. So I move the approval of policy item one B sixteen. Do I have a second?
Burger, second, may I ask a question?
Yes.
You know, with a year's experience, what actions are we taking to review this entire process in terms of what we might do going forward after this?
Thank you, Trustee Berger. We have developed an assessment process that will allow us to track the students that we have admitted under the new admissions processes to track their performance and also to track how well the different interventions that we're putting in place to support them as they go through their education, how well those are working. Of course, the backdrop against which we are operating with the pandemic does not allow us to necessarily do an apples-to-apples comparison with prior years, but it does allow us to identify areas that need to be improved upon as we continue to use enhanced admissions processes without the standardized testing as part of the formulas that we use to admit students.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Burke, question for Executive Vice Chancellor. And on behalf of the University Faculty Senate, I wish to thank the Executive Vice Chancellor for his exemplary service, especially in bringing faculty, students, and staff and trustees together in what has been extraordinarily challenging year. That said, I would still hope that when CAPRA is voting for or decided to vote on this resolution, we do remember that temporary is temporary. The larger matters about removing standardized testing long-term from an institution like CUNY is something that the entire board is going to need to consider probably after we have reliable information, probably when you're having these debates at Northern Arizona. It's one thing for Columbia and NYU to decide that going forward they don't need standardized tests. It may be something different for CUNY. But as far as the proposed continued suspension for calendar twenty-two, this is twenty-two, twenty-three, the academic year, students applying out of the New York City high schools would have had at least one year of remote instruction and in many cases, one year and three and four months. New York State would have suspended their Regents examinations. And while I'm confident in the ability of admissions on our side of the process to do their job, I have to express some doubt on how reliable all the data will be coming from the New York City public schools. Some have done good jobs and some, at least qualitatively at least, have been reported not to have done so well. So without taking us too deeply into the metric woods, might you tell the committee a little more about how the university is going to be making up for the lacune in data, reliable data, for those students who may well have had their cameras off and their microphones down for over a year?
Thank you, Trustee Burke, and I appreciate the words that you shared regarding my tenure at CUNY and please let our UFS colleagues know how much I appreciated the support and the collaboration during my time at CUNY. And I also want to acknowledge that interim E B C and University Provost Dan Lemmons is with us today and he is fully committed to ensuring that the assessment processes and the supports that we are putting in place to support the students that are being newly admitted to CUNY continue and that the board is apprised as things develop so that decisions for the future can be made on solid ground. Regarding the difficulties that we face when we look at our students coming in from the New York City Department of Education and the disruption that the pandemic has caused on their education and on their preparation to be part of CUNY in the future, I must say that that situation is there regardless of whether or not we add the SATs and ACTs to our admissions process. And so really, at the end of the day, what we are trying to do is ensure that our admissions process not only looks at GPAs, but also looks at individual course grades at Regents exams from prior years and in some cases, recommendations and essays depending on each individual institution. And so we will have to trust that knowing how the SATs impact in the past has been on the predictive value of our admissions, which has been minimal compared to the GPA, that the interventions that we will put in place to support students as they come in will be sufficiently good to ensure that any gaps in learning that may have been experienced by the students coming in are taken care of. And so right now, when we're looking at the admissions, extending the admissions process a policy of not using standardized tests, we're doing so primarily from the health and safety standpoint and fully understanding that we will need to continue to assess and improve our support for the students coming in.
Thank you.
Might I make a comment just because at Macaulay Honors College, we accept students at the high end of the range for SAT and ACT scores. And so we've been curious for many years as to what the impact is on college performance. And we have found that after the first year, we really cannot predict college performance and GPA on the basis of scores. And indeed, what we did discover is that the most predictive item in a student's background for predicting high GPA at Macaulay Honors College was the grade they received in social studies in tenth grade, which I think is an interesting statistic that one can speculate why that might be so. But I'm welcoming this hiatus in requirement of SAT and ACT scores because it's going to allow us to look at how our acceptance procedures using GPA and individual recommendations and courses taken, how that will impact how our students perform. But one thing I do know is that over thirty-six percent of our accepted students were BIPOC, which is an improvement for us and is making Macaulay more accessible for New York City students.
Thank you for that, Dr. Pearl. Well, it does seem that it'll allow you to have now a controlled group and a more randomized group so that we can actually understand what role these standardized tests do play in predicting what students will be successful in college. So do I have any other discussion? Yes.
I also want to say that we have removed the GRE requirements for all our graduate programs. And we looked at the results and the performance of the students, both that had been admitted with GRE scores and that had not received a standardized test. And the results were almost identical. There was no difference whatsoever. We use the judgment of their GPAs and their personal statements as an indication for admission. And we did away completely with the standardized test. There's also a growing literature that shows that standardized testing is differentiating the haves from the have-nots, where many of the more economically empowered and more resourced students are able to receive specialized instruction in order to improve their performance on standardized testing, leaving those that have no access to such instruction with lower performance, not indicated by their aptitude, but indicated by their resource. Sorry for the interruption.
Well, thank you for that. Any other discussion comments? Hearing none, we will now vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose.
Burke abstained.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Hearing not, that item passes. We are now going to take up item 1B17 for approval. Policy item 1B17 is a resolution regarding the approval of the actions in the CAPRA dashboard. I now call again on Provost Cruz to provide us full background on this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research in summary form. Introduced in October 2019, the CAPRA dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with this summary data. A few highlights from this month's dashboard include 13 new or revised undergraduate policies, the classification of 16 new general education courses among colleges, giving students more options to study the physical sciences, mathematics, and the humanities, and 40 program actions, including six at community colleges, one at a professional school, and 33 at senior colleges. I turn it back over to the Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any discussion on this? If not, I move the approval of the policy 1B17. Do I have a second?
Burger, second.
Okay, we will now vote. Again, only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Hearing none?
Ali Hila Hassan, opposed.
Opposed, okay. Any other? Okay, thank you. That item has been approved. So before, I think we have nothing else on the calendar, but I too would like to extend first of all my thanks to Provost Cruz for his hard work and working with you during your tenure here and wish you the best moving forward. I know this will be your last CAPRA meeting. And one other item I just wanted to mention is that we did have a board retreat recently and it was brought up that we, CAPRA would take the role, a more stringent role, even though it has always been under our kind of umbrella, to look at the research foundation, its structure and role. So this is something that I just wanted to put on the record that this will be something that will be coming up, that we will be addressing in future meetings. So there being no further items on the calendar, I'd now move to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Burke, second.
Okay. Any oppositions or abstentions? I think not, so thank you all. Thank you for your time today and have a wonderful rest of the week.